Do I do roll call first or seat Pete first? All right, the meeting has been called to order, so let's do the roll call.
Good evening Commissioners. Commissioner Siperly.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Shakler.
Here.
Commissioner Waller.
Here.
Let's have a motion to officially seat our alternate Commissioner Waller.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in, we can do that verbally, or do we need to do a roll? Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're in.
Yep.
You're in, okay, um, let's do the receipt of the minutes. Need a motion to, um, receipt the August 24th draft minutes?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any comments about the minutes? Anybody? I had, of course, one or two, um, regarding, I don't have the, um, I don't know what to do. I had one issue, or, I gotta find the minutes now, for that planning, forgive me. Sorry, Green. Regarding the, um, minutes regarding Planning File 60 dash 20, um, I thought the minutes should reflect the fact that a Commissioner, I believe Commissioner Shakler, um, made a comment that, um, in this particular case, the prior units built at the Meadows that were affordable under the Glenwood Green name, um, do not necessarily exempt, or I didn't feel that they exempted this particular applicant from using those to meet any, um, needs, which they didn't have to, um, but I thought that should be reflected in the minutes, and secondly, um, if I didn't notice it, but I believe the, um, applicant's attorney Chad Lee said that at least they would consider, um, going to council with possibly adding some affordable units, it wasn't a commitment, but it was a consideration, um, so I'd like the minutes to reflect those two things, please. Anybody else?
I think they did make a comment to that.
They?
Yeah, somewhere.
Anyway, but, yeah, any other comments regarding the minutes? Okay, um, then let's, uh, move, they've been moved and seconded, let's take a roll call to accept.
Commissioner White?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner West?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waller? Commissioner Siperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Shakler?
Yes. At this point, uh, the Commission will take comments from citizens or items that do not appear on tonight's agenda, that could be either in person or Zoom, so, uh, which do we do, is there, are there any Zoom, um, requests or hands up? And anybody in the audience care to address Commission for an item that is not on the agenda? Very good, we'll bring it back, and we'll go now to Planning Item 28, dash 21, um, that has been withdrawn, we just have to note that, we don't have to do anything about that, Trent? But the withdrawn item, is there any action yet, other than noting it on the agenda? Okay. Excuse me, that hurts. Um, going to now new items, Planning Item 4321, uh, location and extent review for childcare center at the Glenwood Springs Community Center, and who's got that one?
Well, that would be me.
Thank you. Thank you, Emery.
I'm just gonna share the screen, and I have a short presentation on the item.
Oh, you know, forgive me for one second, either Emery or Hannah, just for a quick moment, for the Commission's sake as well as the public, would you please quickly review what, um, what our purview is for location extent reviews?
Sure. Okay, so location and extent review is required of all public and quasi-public agencies, um, and in this case, we are considering a location and extent review to utilize existing space in the Glenwood Springs Community Center as a licensed childcare center.
And where does Commission, what is Commission's role in terms of recommendations or review?
Sure, so Planning and Zoning Commission will have the option to approve the application, approve with conditions, deny the application, or remand the application back to the Director for further consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so like I said, this is Planning Item 4321, location and extent review for childcare center at the Glenwood Springs Community Center, um, so kind of gave the overview of what your options are, and this is just a little background information on the location of the item, uh, so it's at the Glenwood Springs Community Center, uh, 100 Wolfson, uh, surrounding land uses to the north is commercial lodging, south is undeveloped, east would be Midland Avenue, so right away, and the west is some more parkland, community garden, multifamily residential, and then the entire lot size is 37 acres, and then the building is approximately 39,000 square feet, um, so again, proposal is to utilize existing space for a licensed childcare center, uh, and then just here is the map of the area, so, city center, color, uh, parcels outlined in blue, and then you can kind of see, again, the different uses, surrounding uses of the site, um, so a little, little bit of everything. So the action item that we are considering is approval for the Parks and Rec Department to utilize existing space as a childcare center, uh, staff recommends that Planning and Zoning, location and extent, with findings and conditions on pages six and seven of the report, and like I said, uh, they are your four. So, just a little bit more information on the project itself, uh, would be about 1,300 square feet, it would be intended to serve 12 to 15 children, operating hours would be Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., it would be state licensed, uh, the intent would be that it would primarily be for city staff attendance, um, if there was room, uh, would be possible to extend that to the public, as far as staffing, uh, it would require a full-time director and two to three part-time employees, and the proposed starting date, uh, would be beginning of calendar year 2022, um, again, that's proposed, and then here on the image, you can, that's the approximate location of the proposed childcare, so if you go in the doors of the community center, it's to the right, and there's an existing, uh, childcare watch in two of those rooms, and then I have photos, so here's the existing, there's two rooms that are already used as a childcare watch, that's limited hours, and then this third room is where, if approved, that childcare center would be utilizing that space, uh, which is currently underutilized. Um, again, here's the site plan, so entry and exit to the community center, uh, primary parking area would be this yellow area there, designated for 15-minute parking for drop off to the childcare center, and again, you can see the approximate location called out there, um, and as far as criteria for approval, uh, any location and extent review, uh, the three criteria are, is application is consistent with comprehensive plan goals and policies, it's consistent with general purpose and intent of the code, and then it minimizes adverse impacts, health, safety, and welfare of inhabited surrounding area and the rest of the city, so those are the three criteria we'll be considering, um, so this is kind of staff analysis, so first, that the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, so we have direct development to locations and forms that are cost-effective to serve, uh, it's using the existing site, existing city resources to expand city services, uh, to promote sustainable economic diversity and maintain Glenwood's role as a regional center, uh, so this proposed use addresses a need in the community for childcare, um, so it would help improve quality of life and attracting and retaining a quality workforce for the city and other employers in the community, uh, support social diversity, again, providing childcare options, uh, as it's, addresses a lack of quality options in the region, and then again, maintain Glenwood Springs as the regional tourism, retail, commercial, and governmental center of Garfield County, so again, having childcare opportunities offers benefits to attracting and retaining workforce and its definite need, um, so two, consistency with general purpose and intent of this code, uh, so as far as general zoning requirements, setback building height, building design, meets all those, uh, code does call out for a childcare center to use specific standards, uh, one is that the applicant should provide documentation of approval from state of Colorado, uh, so Parks and Rec Department has been in the process of getting in contact and with the state of Colorado and obtain, and would be obtaining all required licenses and approvals, and then the second one, which is specific to childcare centers, uh, buffering of play area, uh, from any play areas adjacent to residential uses, not applicable in this case, uh, here's a photo of the play area, it's on the east side of the building, uh, so again, that doesn't apply, uh, and then again, parking, uh, so this proposed project would require six parking spaces, uh, the community center has approximately, oh, 320 parking spaces, and it would require, under code, it would require 133, so it definitely meets proposed, proposed parking meets requirement, um, and then finally minimizes adverse impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the surrounding areas in the city, uh, so there's a mix of uses in the area, um, staff finds that it does not negatively impact, uh, the neighboring area, again, it's a proposed childcare center in a community-oriented facility which already offers similar type services, um, these are some photos, this, again, to the south, to the west, uh, north, and then you have Midland Avenue, kind of the north and east, so. And then again, we just, I got this from an engineering department, put this together, uh, just, uh, a traffic study, um, so this shows that there would be a small increase on traffic in the morning as you have people dropping off, um, and then again, the numbers, it actually, the original study for the community center incorporated a theater, um, so that's why some of the numbers are a little bit more, um, but in general, most of the impact of the traffic would probably be seen on the interior of the property, uh, in the mornings mostly, and so reviewing agencies, uh, no formal written comments received from the need department, but this project has been developed with regular input from all applicable departments, uh, no public comments were received, um, and so again, uh, staff recommends approval of the action item, uh, with findings and conditions on pages six and seven of the report, and, and I've seen those are the four, approve item, approval of conditions, deny, or remand the application back to Director, and we also have some people here from Parks and Rec to get any other questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff at this point? Seeing none, um...
I guess, I have a quick question.
Sure.
It seems like, I mean, it's obviously like the great, but what, by 12 and by 12 to 15, is that, is it the maximum number based on the number of the square foot of the space?
I assume probably requirement, state.
Introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening Commissioners, I'm Brian Smith, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director, uh, this is Chrissy Newton, who's our community center manager, uh, that's correct, so the, the ratio is based off of square footage calculation, we have the ability to expand into additional rooms, this is gonna be a pilot program, uh, we are looking at, um, other facility options as well if this is, uh, successful, we will start with about additional 15 children, um, see how that goes, we, Chrissy and I had an interview with, um, the Colorado Department of Human Services, they had contracted with, um, Epic to facilitate employer-based childcare, uh, design lab, uh, in partnership with the Early Childhood, Office of Early Childhood at Colorado Department of Human Services, and that's gonna launch, uh, here next month, it's a $800,000 grant program, and, um, the intent of this employer-based program is to first open up these services to City Glenwood Springs employees, we, council hears consistently from the public about the lack of childcare services in the community, we've had, uh, Montessori School and a couple other providers that have a closed-up shop that's put a strain on the community, as parents are coming back to work in person from virtual sessions, uh, this is a need not only in our organization, but other organizations, we anticipate if this, um, if the program goes well and we see the demand, uh, we would open this up to the public, probably working with other employer agencies like Valley View Hospital and the School District to provide additional services.
Awesome.
Commissioners, other questions? Here's your speaking plug, sorry, Ben.
Well, gosh. Yeah, I, I had a question too, um, kind of follow-up on, on Ben's, and I, I mean, your, your, your staff report's good, so it pretty much covers everything, but on, so on the utilization for that room, I saw that, that you said there, you know, it's not utilized very much, it used to be birthday parties there, and since COVID, there's no birthday parties, or something like that, and, and so, so the Ben's question is, so it's 12 to 15, or whatever that number is, and then if you did expand, open it up, I mean, how much, how much unutilized space is in the community center, and what's your thought for, you know, full build-out size, just to ask that question?
The requirement is 35 square foot per child, between the three rooms, we have the 1,500 square foot, so we could fit more now, based on those numbers, we're, we would like to keep the child watch for our members available, just to start and see how it works together.
Really makes sense, yeah.
Community Center is still recovering from pandemic shutdown, uh, we're, we're about at half revenue per month in memberships that we were pre-pandemic, uh, so that use right now is low, but it is increasing, um, we'll have to see what the, what the impact to the community center is gonna be as we have more members, why come in utilizing our temporary childcare services with the little rec explorer rooms, if this program is successful and we see a good demand for it, and, uh, there are partnerships available with some of the other large employers in the city, uh, we would either look at possibly carving out some space in the community center, but that's gonna be too much of an impact, we'll look at other facilities available to us, like the art center, um, you know, right across the street, we have the old youth zone building, they'll be there until we do...
Right, 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 right.
Couple different solutions that will work.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that was my question, thank you.
Commissioners, any others? There are others, they're not named.
Here's the block.
Well, I, you know, the, the community obviously needs daycare, uh, and I think it's great that that's happening, my only comment would be that the community center is a public space, right, that's, uh, supported by the general public, and I just question the, how there's priority for city employees rather than just open across the board to the general population, I understand if there are space, that that could be put out to the general population, but in my mind, there's a little bit of a conflict there, and, uh, you mentioned something about this grant that was specific to city employees, is, is that what I'm...
Employer-based program, so it is looking at helping, um, the workforce come back to in-person, uh, with major employers, uh, in the area, um, us being one of those, um, I think when we open it up to the public, we'll probably work in that same sort of vein with, um, with, uh, businesses in the, in the city, um, but, you know, we're just, we're just starting out on this, we're kind of feeling this out, um, I'm sure there is quite a bit of demand for the general public. Jen had a follow-up on that.
I think that we, our, our employees may be a more forgiving crowd if we can turn this space, so, uh, I think the idea is to, to do it as a pilot and, um, and then to see if there is an ability to do some expansion, so it's sort of, um, moving beyond general services that are provided by the city government, um, beyond the, the kids' watch to the next step, um, so I think that if it works well, that there would be a desire to expand the program.
But you don't see any contradiction or, or conflict that it's specific for city employees rather in a public space?
Well, I think that we also are suffering from the, the challenges that, um, other employers are, so we are, um, looking at this also as an employer, trying to continue to provide city services.
Thanks.
Other questions, Commissioners? Questions?
Because it's, uh, kind of a multi-use building, are there any sort of security concerns or safety concerns with there being a lot of people from all sectors of, of our community in and out of the space?
If you, if you walk in the front doors, you can see where the, where the drop-off and pick-up door is, um, that is the only entrance that would be open into those, those back spaces, the other two rooms are in the back of the building, um, so there's not public coming and going.
Okay, and I have utilized that space with my own children, so the protocol would be similar, you check them in, and, and people get checked out.
Okay. Okay.
Others? Okay, we've heard from the applicants, um, anybody, um, here from the public here on Zoom that'd like to comment on this application? Anything on Zoom? All right, if not, um, any more comments from the applicants based, excuse me, based on the Commissioners?
No, I will just put a plug in to, uh, remind you that the Commissioners do have a membership to the community center, please for, uh, to get, uh, shut off some of those COVID isolation pounds, come over and utilize the facility.
Thank you, Brian. All right, let's bring it back to the Commission, and we'll, um, seek a motion on this Planning Item 4321, so, is there a motion, please? Commissioner Siperly?
I would move to approve Planning Item Number 4321, location and extent review for childcare at the community center, uh, I would move to approve.
With, uh, findings?
With findings and conditions on pages six and seven of the staff report.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, um, are there additional comments at this point from the Commission? Anybody? Pete? Pass the puck.
Pass the puck. Yeah, the one, the one comment I had is, um, and I, and maybe it's a question, is on conditions, it, it, it seems like there should be a condition that says that, that, you know, just like you said in the, in the staff report, that, that you need to have the county and state approval before it can happen, I mean, it seems like that should be a condition, because if that doesn't happen, it can't start on January 1st, or whatever that date is, and I know that's a key part from, I guess, what I read in the staff report, but it seems like that would be a condition, I don't know whether, what other people think about that, or, but that's a pretty darn important thing, I think, is I know that they look at security, they look at all these sorts of things, your space, and, just from my, from doing these in the past, so.
I can, I can speak to that real quick, um, yes, so we are required by the state to license the facility, uh, like we do for our kid, uh, kid camps, um, and that is the, the next step, once we have the, the planning review approved, then we will submit that application to the state, we're required, and there's, uh, a couple of site visits that have to happen with that before you get found, provoked and opened up.
Yeah, I, I just think we should have that one, as one of the conditions, I guess that's what I would propose.
Condition one, does they have outlined in all application materials, and you well mentioned, at least in the staff report, that they wouldn't need to be licensed to the state, so I wonder if that catches up for us?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of generally does, I mean, I, I just think that's such a big thing, but anyway, I mean, I could buy that, what you're saying, but...
So, we can add a separate condition, or assuming it's covered both on Brian's verbal just now and condition one, either way? What would you prefer?
Well, I was just gonna add too, that in code, a childcare center cannot operate without, I mean, that's the, use, use, use specific standards, so I'm not sure if that clears it up, but...
Yeah.
What do you think?
I'm good with going with what Carolyn said, I'm good with that.
Very good. Any other comments from the Commission? All right, it's been moved and seconded, let's take a vote, okay? Planning Item 4321, Commissioner Shakler?
Yes.
For approval.
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Waller?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Planning Item 4321 passes unanimously. It, um, it got, uh...
For the, um, rules and regs, the...
That's coming up, isn't it? Oh, we skipped it? Oh.
Didn't we?
Well, where was it?
Continued items.
Under continued items, yeah.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
In the fine print.
I'll throw that at the end then, how about that?
Okay.
All right, I knew it was in there, I thought it was coming. All right, uh, just for the record, we did skip an item, we'll throw in it at the end, the bylaws, which we'll deal with quickly, right? All right, let's move on to, uh, Planning Item, what are we at, 3221, consideration of a request for an amendment to a special use permit for addition of automobile fuel sales in the M1 mixed-use corridor district, thank you, Trent.
Good evening, uh, Vice Chairman and Planning and Zoning Commissioners, Trent Hyatt, uh, here with VA Development Department, give me just one second here, I'll share my screen so that anyone watching from home can watch it, but this is, uh, 23 Melray Road, it's an amendment to a special use permit to add fuel cells to this site, it's Planning File 32 dash 21. Just to give you a little, uh, overview of the site, it's on the M1 mixed-use corridor district, and currently at the site, uh, which is approximately 10,000 square feet, um, there is a building, um, that has two units, one that's approximately 1,000 square feet, that is the location of an existing retail marijuana establishment, um, as well as a 1,000-square-foot, um, area that's on the north side of the building, that, um, is, is vacant retail space that was formerly Geno's Liquors, the applicant is proposing to add fuel cells via the existing pumps and, and fuel island at the site, this will be electronic fuel sales only, there will be no convenience store use that is associated with the fuel sales, um, and that's kind of important as we talk about the space and the parking spaces, um, that, that are currently located at the site. Special use permit review criteria outlined in Section 706050E, 3E point 2 of the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code, I, or one being compatibility with the surrounding uses, um, of course, fuel sales occurred previously at this site, if you look at the picture there at the bottom of, of your slide, it will show, uh, the former Shell Station was there, I'll show you some pictures that show the site today, uh, but again, the applicant is intending to utilize, you know, these existing pumps that are here, the convenience store that was on the south, uh, unit of that building is no longer, that is where the, the retail marijuana establishment is today, but retail uses, uh, currently occur at the site, they occur in a lot of the adjacent properties, um, as well as other uses like restaurants, some auto body service and repair, this property is, of course, adjacent to Interstate 70, it says 82 there, but it's Interstate 70, so it, there are a lot of uses in this area that generally serve the traveling public, um, as this is intended to, um, moving forward. Two, the impacts have been adequately minimized, this use is not expected to generate an additional negative impact at the site that are not already occurring, or that are occurring on adjacent properties. Three, consistency with the general purpose and intent of the code, um, this does appear to be consistent with the efficient and orderly development, um, intents that are outlined in, in the municipal code. Four, will comply with all applicable standards of the code, this property is currently in compliance with the code, but I do want to point out a few things, um, that, that are applicable here, you know, there are aspects of the existing parking lot and circulation that are, that are substandard as per the code if this was to be rebuilt today, mainly landscaping, islands, buffering, screening, those type of things, um, there are currently eight spaces at the site, four which are under the canopy for the, the fuel island, and four, um, that are elsewhere in the parking lot that are utilized by the marijuana use, the combination of these uses, because of the limited parking there, will likely make that vacant... The combination of these uses, because of the limited parking there, will likely make that vacant space remain that way until, a couple of things. Until the applicant would like to redevelop the entirety of this site with the property that they own to the west or unless some use, such as the retail marijuana establishment leaves. One reason being is that when you do add parking for uses, you know, they could utilize that existing lot to the west for, for parking, but that requires the circulation, the screening and the buffering and everything else on the existing site to come into compliance. I've had many conversations with the applicant about improvements to the sites and how we could, you know, incorporate, you know, housing and units for redevelopment in the future, but that's, again, that's something that they're looking at long term and they'd like, you know, some, some, some leasable space till that, that point in time. One of the conditions of the retail marijuana establishment that you all heard about this time last year was that staff work with the applicants to develop some solution to the wide open access and dangerous pedestrian situation that was occurring at this site previously. We did that much to, to the, upsetting the applicant at the time because, you know, when we started looking at options in terms of striping or some means of pedestrian access there, really the only option that seemed appropriate was to provide, as you'll see down, are the pictures to the left, to provide some separation from pedestrians from the right of way of Melray Road and then a sidewalk adjacent there too. The, the benefit of that was that, you know, we also limited that wide open access that, that currently, or previously existed there. So we have much better circulation at the site just based on that and especially a safer situation for, for pedestrians. Fuel cells is expected to increase traffic slightly there. It's going to increase peak M-hour, or I'm sorry, PM peak hour trips by a total of twelve for a, overall eighty for the day there. That's going to be an increase in average daily trips for the entirety of the site of approximately two hundred and eighteen for a total of four eighty-three. One of the things that we did also look at was making sure that the addition of this use, as well as other uses of that vacant retail space, didn't bump the increase in, in peak hour trips above one hundred because that would require a much higher level of transportation analysis and potentially improvement at, at this, at this property. Five, conformance with the comprehensive plan and other city plans, as you'll see, identified there in purple. This, this site is identified as mixed use. This use does seem to be in compliance or in support of various goals that are outlined in, in the twenty-eleven comprehensive plan, such as promoting economic development, maintaining our city as a regional center of our county, preserving our small town character, convenient transportation, infill development, social diversity and preserving natural resources. Seven, minimizes adverse impacts to health, safety and welfare. And this use, adding this use anyways, does not appear to negatively impact any of, any of those. So section seventy-sixty-thirty-G one B allows you to approve, approve with conditions or deny this application. Of course, you always have the option to continue this with the request for additional information. Staff recommends the approval with conditions of the action item with the findings and conditions found on page seven of the staff report. And Amos Underwood and Peter Fornell, the two property owners are here this evening and I'm sure they're happy to answer questions as well, but I'll answer any questions that you have of staff at this time.
Questions, commissioners? I don't know whose, I think Carolyn, you go first. You didn't. Hey, George?
Let's see. I, I was looking back at the old approvals for Martin's Marijuana and there was a condition in there that the, the pumps would be removed. Were they ever removed?
I don't know that we maintained that, there was a.
It was shown, it was shown on the drawing.
Okay.
The site plan said pumps will be removed.
Yeah, I don't know that, no, they were not removed, they, they are still there. Part of the reason why you're hearing this today is that there is a condition on the, on the occupancy of that building that they either remove the pumps or come into compliance with the International Fire Code and state regulations for the removal of the tanks that are in the ground within one year of those ceasing operations. So they will need to, to re-operate or resell gas by December or there will have to be actions taken. They were not removed. I was slightly confused because there was a condition that they removed the non-conforming sign that, that previously existed. So that was a specific condition that was listed and that was removed.
The, the other question I have is on the, the applicant's drawing eight dot one dot zero. Can you, have, do you have that ability to pull that up? I could never get that thing to come up where I could read it or read it fully.
It's one of those sheets in the drawings?
Yeah, the third, third of three. Yeah, that one.
Probably not used to, to seeing a, a site plan with that many colors. And one of the reasons being is because this is ultimately an adds build of, of the current site conditions, which is.
Yeah, you can't, can't read it either, I mean, it's.
You could zoom in there on something if you need.
If you look behind us, it might be.
Do you have a specific question about?
Yeah, I was wondering where the tanks are filled.
The applicant might have to tell you that, but I, I think there's, it's somewhere in this area, between the building and the, and the island. But the applicant might have to tell you specifically.
Yeah, the question was where those are and how the truck gets in and out. I can ask the applicant.
Yeah, there, there is, you know, approximately twenty-four feet between the, the island and the building there. So I assume that the truck would park there or perhaps it even parks on the property to the west, but they may be able to better answer that for you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners of staff? Pete?
The question I have is, that was on your, on your first condition. So if, if, let's say that for some reason they, they fell behind on their marijuana, they lost their certification or whatever it's called, does that mean that the, that the gas pumps would have to be pulled? Because it, I mean, it, I mean, that's kind of the back end of that question, you know, the applicant may shall maintain required licenses for the retail marijuana prior to the issuance of the special use permit. So let's say after this, you know, two years from now or whatever, that that happened with that.
Oh, thanks.
At a deal or, I mean, because they're, they're like two separate things.
I think we would look at them separately. And, and that kind of brings up a good point related to this use. You know, a, a retail marijuana establishment in the city requires review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval by city council. And this instance, this amendment, we decided that, you know, since that it was, was, was outlined as, as applicable only to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we're, we're only here tonight and you're the approval body for adding that use. So I think we would look at them separately.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions?
Um, when you guys evaluated trip, trips to the location, you stated there is one more retail space that's vacant there right now. Would trips vary based off of the, the use of that space? And did you guys just max out what could potentially be trips for that space?
Yeah, we, retail, you know, it, it's been some sort of retail previously. We, the only use that there's been discussion about was having liquor cells there again. Actually, the, the applicant made a decision that fuel sales were more important to, to the site and revenue generation overall as opposed to having, having a liquor store. So we just assumed retail sales, which, which I would say would probably have a higher use than, let's say, more docile, um, commercial uses.
Very good.
I think it was evaluated actually as a liquor store.
Well, thank you, Trent. The applicant like to come forward for questions?
Thanks, Trent. And say it's your name and address, please, in the mic, yeah, over there, thank you.
Thank you, Peter Fornell. We're the owners of the property and I'm the applicant. I'd like to thank Trent for his hard work first and making the meeting together for us tonight and for your time in hearing us. I don't have a whole lot to tell you about, about what's going on there past what Trent gave you in his application. I do just want to say that we worked real well and things went very smoothly with community development and engineering on behalf of our effort to, to increase the pedestrian amenity that was along the property there. We were, we were really happy to do it and we're satisfied with the look of the property, with the outcome of it all. I think it was, it was a, a needed addition and well worth doing. The only thing that I'd like to say, you know, from a community aspect is, first off, that we have, we have maintained and are fully in compliance with the, all of the state regulations for fuel sales, although we have not been selling fuel. We have a company from Grand Junction who is a professional in the industry for oversight of fueling stations, STTI in Grand Junction, if you're familiar with them. And, and, and we've maintained ourselves in compliance with that. And I think from, you know, a life safety standpoint and, and biosafety, I think it's important for you to know. And other than that, I'll, I'll answer your first question, Mr. Shaver, and that was with regard to the filling. And we have had to put fuel into the tanks in order to have measurable amounts in there and maintaining our, our compliance with the state. And we've had no problem in using Monument Fuel in their, in their vehicular equipment. They, one of our, one of our filling areas is between the fuel and the building. One of our filling areas is between the building and the sidewalk. And they had no problem with their equipment in the circulation as far as getting in and out and, and filling those. And I can only expect that, that that's an activity that's going to take place during low traffic hours. We're going to get our fuels late at night or early in the morning as generally speaking, uh, uh, fuel trucks do that as a practice. So, uh, you know, we're, we're excited to start selling fuel there. And I, I think I can leave it to any questions you might have from me now.
Commissioners, other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, can you, can you show on the, the site plan how that fueling act, uh, action happens?
Uh, I definitely think that's.
Yeah. Well, a, a good bit of it is occurring in that yellow area. Well, thank you. I have to use my glasses, apologies. Let's see. Well, the, we have, we have two entrances now and at the north side, which is just at the very top of where the, the blue tab is, that's our entry area. The truck can fit in comfortably into that area and it drives along between the sidewalk and the building. It stops at that location and their piping from the trucks reaches both of those fuel stations. If I use the mouse, one of them is, whoa, one of them is about right where the mouse sits now. And the other is, I think it's even denoted here, but it's where the mouse is currently sitting now, if you can see that. And with the in and then ingress in and egress out of those spots, the truck can manage it easily.
So where that darker gray? Is that the entrance? I assume this is a semi truck or is it?
No, it's actually not, they're called, it's what a straight truck is. Do you know what a straight truck is? It doesn't, you know, it doesn't.
Doesn't articulate.
They have, uh, they have, you know, the, the fueling services companies out of, out of Rifle and Silk, both have vehicles of varying sizes. For some facilities, they bring them in a tractor trailer. For some facilities, they bring them by straight truck and that's how our facility will go. We're not anticipating to have the quantity of fuel sales that a full service convenience store would have. And we expect that based on the historic use that, that, that of course went on there forever, as you guys may remember, we do have counts of quantity for how it occurred previously. And based on those counts, we can easily keep our facility, uh, uh, inventory with, with these straight trucks as, as they're described by Monument Fuel.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Pete? Oh, down here, then we'll get it back to Carolyn.
Okay, my, my question is, is probably outside of the, of the purview of this, but I know they talked about, you know, landscaping, blah, 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 that kind of stuff. And, and it sounds, everything's fine. But, but so what's, what's your thought, you know, for the long range plan for the property? Yeah, cause I mean, so, so you own the property right, the, the adjacent one right there to the west? And then Gino's or whatever, the retail spaces, yeah, what's your thought?
Obviously, this all was born from our desire to be in a partnership with our current tenant, which is the Dabby Silver Peak. It was Martin's Naturals who are longtime friends of mine, uh, from the Denver area. But, you know, we, we, we don't have a specific site plan in our minds. I think that we want to sort of crawl, walk, run because we, we think that we do have the opportunity for a variety of uses there. I think we've got an opportunity for, uh, for commercial endeavors that might be to the benefit of the community on that, community on that westerly portion. And we, we did submit from Roger Neal from High Country Engineering, a plan that shows that we can, I suppose the word legally might not be the word, with compliance, put an egress over to the westerly lot through the center of our easterly lot and we can grant that to ourselves. So we don't have a problem with, with creating a legal access to that westerly portion without having to try to dip into six and twenty-four and get the state involved and all that. I don't believe that that's going to be, will, will ever be necessary for us. It's about as far into it as we've reached with regard to what it will be. But, but in as much as we had, had a good relationship with engineering, building and community development with the improvements that we've made to date, I expect that, you know, that, that our, our desire will definitely be to, to come in and compliance with all of the things that we'll need to do at the time, including the landscaping, including the things as Trent had mentioned. But, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's simply just a question mark for us right now. So, so when that time comes, we'll be prepared for doing it the right way. Yeah, thanks.
I'll fill you in on all the things I'd like to prepare.
He's got good ideas.
All right, my questions were about kind of amenities that one tends to expect at a gas station. Like will there be access to a bathroom and will there be an air, air pump facility? And also I'm concerned about an emergency shut off. I mean, I know there's usually a button on the side, but does, does the fire department just come? And then besides that, I have a question about what your signage will be, so.
Okay, well, the, let, let's start with the emergency part of it first, because I think that's the most important. As I said, we're in compliance with the state regarding all those things and we, from, you know, they only stopped selling fuel there January first of this year and they'd been selling it for a very long time. And all of those facilities are in place and operable. So we've got the push button shut off and so forth. And as much as we have a pay at the pump and we don't have any facility, there's no, there's no restroom facilities requirements for us. The, you know, Dabby Silver Peak does have a bathroom in there and that was part of our compliance there. I, I suppose they'd want to work in conjunction with somebody. I imagine they want somebody to walk through their front door. So if somebody had to use the restroom, of course you'd have to be twenty-one to go in. So, so that's an issue, but, but as it is a pay only services deal, it's not a requirement of ours. Let's see, I'm, I'm missing.
The sign.
Oh, and with, with regard to signage, I rely on Amos Underwood, who's my business partner here. He's adept with all of the land use code and, and, and we, and we complied with all of those land use code requirements regarding the signage with our Dabby Silver Peak location. And it'll just be for us to make sure that we apply for and receive the proper notification for the signage that we will eventually intend.
And although it is not relevant to this discussion, have you picked a, like a vendor or a company?
We haven't. It's probably going to depend on who provides the fuels, whether or not, whether or not I'm the provider or a tenant of ours will be the provider. Right now it'll probably be an independent, it probably will not be a. Right now, it'll probably be an independent. It probably will not be a flag.
Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant? Okay, seeing none, uh, this would be time for any public comment. Thank you, Peter. Anything on Zoom? Okay, and we have public comment here. David, introduce yourself, please.
Evening Commissioners, my name is David Repia. I live at 204 Alpine Court in Glenwood. Some of you I know, some of them I don't, but I did the work that you see on the, it's certainly on the screen right there for the applicant. And just to put this in historical context, he asked me to speak on that. But as far as trip generation and everything else, a lot of you have been around here for a long time. I actually worked at that when it was a service station in the mid, early seventies, and it had been around five, six, seven, eight years then, and then they combined it and made a convenience store. You're not talking increased traffic trips over what, what the property has historically been. It looks better now than it ever has. And, and it's just, it's been up until this last January, probably 50 years or more of uninterrupted combined fuel and retail sales. So it's, it's not a new use. It's not something that's new to the property or new to the area. And I would just urge your approval of it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. All right, anybody else from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission and entertain a motion on planning item 4321. From somebody. Mr. Waller.
I'll make a motion to.
I'm sorry, what, 3221? Sorry, item 3221.
I'll make a motion to approve item.
3221.
3221, um, to allow automobile fuel sales in the M1 mixed-use corridor district, given the findings and recommended conditions on page seven of the staff report. We have a motion second. How about Commissioner, any Commissioner comments at this time? All right, see none, so let's call the questions, please.
All right, for planning item 3221, Commissioner Waller.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner West? Commissioner Shakler? Commissioner Sibley? Commissioner White? Planning item 3221 passes the house.
Thank you. Now, um, thanks to my oversight, we'll go back to planning file 1821. Consideration. Not a health issue, don't worry. Consideration of, of the planning and zoning commission bylaws. Is that yours, Jen?
Good evening Commissioners, I, I think this is the, you've seen this, uh, recent?
Several times. Um, I, I think that we finally have all of your changes incorporated. So we are just looking for, um, a motion to approve these bylaws, so that you can continue to use them as we move forward.
Okay, you've seen the final bylaws, I hope. Are there any questions before we?
Or edits?
I have some more typos just that I picked up.
From? Okay, and this is on the, on the final, on the, Carolyn, on the final document?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Under, um, motion reg, one E, special meeting. Uh, where am I? Special meeting. That is E, uh, commission, part, to the next. Uh, pressing the list, which requires action by the commission, part to the next regular meeting. The part.
What item number are you looking at?
It is E, special meetings under topic one meeting. The second line. I think we just have the next part.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, scrolling down to part five, just the V, under deadline for agenda, filing applications. I think that was just an extra, uh, filling application, is it?
Oh.
And then the two more, under procedure for public hearings, which is, uh, title seven. Underneath six says no further. Says north. Uh, G.
Yeah, under G.
North, no further statement. Under G.
North, no.
Yeah, seven.
It should just be no.
God, Carolyn.
No. I guess she read them, huh, Commissioner? Hello?
Uh, and then, let's see, scroll down to J. Discussion among commissioners on the finding, uh, but this is where we can ask the applicant question after the motion, right? Under J.
Discussion on the motion, officials may ask clarification questions of staff.
But we can ask clarification from the applicant too at this point, right?
I need an opinion on that one. Richard and Jen, are, once we've had a motion and we're discussing. Okay.
So we would want to add applicant to J there.
Can you go back to the one that was before that?
Yeah, G, no further.
Instead of north, no further, it'd just be no further. Right?
I know.
This is tough, Carolyn.
The task.
That was artificial intelligence putting in north.
I think it's because it was a scanned document.
Yeah, I, I understand that sometimes it, it interprets.
And we thought we, we got them all.
All right. Do you have others?
I'm seeing B1. On the record, on the record.
Uh.
On the record, on the record.
We're just making sure it's on the record.
Under D1.
Second-to-last sentence.
This is on the record twice. That's all I got.
All right.
Get a lollipop.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
There are seven procedure for public hearings. Yeah. That, I, maybe I'm just not understanding this. It says the chairperson, person shall limit the time for applicant in public to make such rebuttal. I'm, I just am confused by the wording, I guess.
In public, right?
Yeah.
Are they going to make a rebuttal in private? No?
We've really never limited them either.
The applicant's having.
Only the public comments been limited.
Should it be and?
Public?
Maybe it's and.
And, yeah. Pass under seven, head of seven.
Good, good find, George, yeah. Publicly respond.
Yeah, and.
The chairperson shall limit the time for the public.
Public and.
Or applicant to make such rebuttal.
Public don't get to make any rebuttal.
Right.
Right.
The applicant, the public comment and applicant rebuttal.
The chairperson shall limit the time for app, for the applicant to make.
This is kind of, this is almost, this is almost inadvertently combining two sections. Shouldn't be the applicant at all, should it? Is this just public comment?
Previously covered public, onto the rebuttal only, the chairperson shall limit the time for the applicant to make such rebuttal.
The chairperson gets to make a rebuttal to the public com, or the applicant gets to make a rebuttal to the public comment.
Correct.
So then it's just applicant makes rebuttal of any point of, any points not previously covered. The chairperson shall limit the time for the applicant to make such rebuttal. Just striking that whole middle sentence?
Are we going to start limiting times for applicants to make?
We haven't. So do we just need that one sentence, Jen? And limit, eliminate the rest?
I mean, if an applicant went on and on and on, we might then decide to limit them.
But can't, I think the chairperson could do that even if it's not in the bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah. Couldn't they? Huh?
I mean, never to bring us the bylaws again, Sharon.
darn right.
Oh, the cop plan is going to be fun.
So, so just the one sentence. Applicant makes rebuttal of any points not previously covered, period.
Yeah.
Carolyn, will you give me your first two again, since I'm actually editing the document?
The first one was one E, special meeting. Commission, part to the next.
Oh, just part, okay, commission to the next regular meeting, okay? And what was that?
Title five, deadline, filing, instead of filling application. Those are two L's. Five deadlines.
Fourth word, yep. We good? All right.
Well, one of the things. And may, maybe, I'm just wondering, under five deadline for agenda where it says, uh, that the director, as soon as it is practicable with the goal of having those changes reflected on the printed agenda, given our current status, I wonder if, if the word posted would be better than printed?
Or official.
You know, meaning when it becomes official, public agenda.
Good point.
And we don't really print it.
And we do actually print it in the newspaper, but we can say posted agenda.
Well, I don't know, um, just a, you know, just a question. On the final agenda, maybe, yeah, maybe that's.
And you approve the final, yeah.
Posted, published, whatever.
Good point.
And it is possible that sometimes there is a gap there and somebody would either just ask, I think they would present it, or they would come and present and say, they, um, they would ask for the continuance in public. I mean, sometimes we present it on their behalf.
For the continuance part.
For the continuance.
That's all.
All right. Any others? And we need a motion to approve this?
I think so.
All right. How about it, gang? Who's going to move to approve these bylaws?
Wait, Chair. The time moved to approve the rules, regulations, and procedures presented before us with the six or seven minor adjustments, um, just discussed, uh, and issued to what is written.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve bylaws. Any additional comments? Let's call the question, please.
Planning file 1821, Commissioner Waller?
Yes.
Commissioner Shakler?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Sibley?
Yes.
Planning file 1821 passes the house.
Very good. All right, that ends all our, um, continued new items, so we'll go to Commissioner comments. We'll start down at Commissioner Waller's end.
Public comment is welcome.
Here you go.
Planner.
All right. What's your new position? Can you introduce that? Yeah. Don't be shy. Address.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm the new senior planner here, working under, under Hannah and Jen.
Welcome.
And you live in Glenwood, I hear, too, right?
Right.
Congratulations.
Where'd you come from?
I was working for the town of Basalt the past four and a half years, so I'm familiar with area. Been in Glenwood, been living in Glenwood about the last six months. And, uh, finding that there is a lot more to learn.
Now you have childcare for your kids?
Don't have one of those yet, but.
All right, well, welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Love you.
Uh, look at that. Beautiful. Seven oh eight. That's great. I think it's great to have more childcare. I'm, I'm excited for that. Uh, I mean, it's always an issue. I would like to see it, I mean, why not keep going from 15? Looks like there's room for 38, by my math, or 42 or something. There's a lot. So that's great. I think it's a great use for some unutilized space in the rec center. That's all I got.
Commissioner White?
Um, I would just say it's exciting to see the city thinking creatively around the childcare issue and trying to retain staff or entice staff. I think that COVID has made us have to be so ultra-adaptive, and this is just an extension of that. So, good on the city.
You? Commissioner Shaver?
Oh, I'll go.
Should we go back and put the dinner into the bylaws? Dinner will be served at 5:30 every meeting? No?
You have to go back to Zoom, I'm not promising.
Um, I, I did actually get a weird telephone call from somebody in Denver offering to buy my house up at the Blue, uh, the other day. And I, I, I told them two million, but, um, I said, really, we need some senior housing. And I think it would be, uh, it would be really a cool project to combine some senior housing, like all on one level, with some childcare somewhere around here. So hopefully somebody brings us an interesting proposal like that. But there certainly is, um, a huge need for childcare. I don't have kids and I'm super glad for that, but I don't know, I don't know what the whole, the rest of you do if you've got to go to work and you can't take them because there's just nowhere for them to go. And I think that's part of because we don't have our seniors in our communities anymore. Usually they, they love to watch the little ones. So that's just, I guess, the, the trajectory that our nation is on at this point. Um, maybe we can bring that around full circle and get the kids in the old folks together again. So, yeah, I'm, I'm glad about the, um, the childcare and that today was a nice easy meeting. Oh, also, the three clocks say three different things, and that city of Glenwood really bothers me. If we could say shh, yeah. That's about all for me.
Uh, no comments, but a question of where do we stand with, uh, comp plan? What's the status?
You're taking me under.
I'm sorry.
Actually, I would like to turn on the first.
Uh, we are, we are close to being under contract with the contractor that we selected with the help of Marco and Sumner, Cushing Terrell. They have been here in the valley doing work with Carbondale and previously with Basalt, so they're familiar with our, with our area. Great firm, they provide a great proposal that I think was certainly not the, the most expensive, but a good value in the middle. You know, Sumner could maybe speak to that a little bit. But, um, the, the total contract amount was under $214,000, but that also included some social, um, social media and social commenting platform that we actually purchased in addition to that called Bang the Table, as well as we wanted to make sure Spanish language translation was a huge part of this. We're planning maybe one or two meetings even specific in Spanish to that community to try to encourage them to come out. If you saw, you probably got a text with the community survey that was recently completed. We've compiled that last week and we'll be getting the data out, the city council and others, but we, we intend to utilize that information to help kind of guide some of the issues that we want to address through the comprehensive plan update. But I, I think we'll begin work in advance of our anticipated start date of November 1st, because maybe we're hoping that we won't be under contract by the end of this week or even next week, so.
Did we hit the target for the community survey of 1,000 responses? We come even close to it?
Very good, but I don't think it's quite 1,000.
Well, so my target number was 400.
Oh. Oh, so somebody's buying one that.
So, um, 335, like.
You know, um, so, uh, my number in my mind was 400. Um, and Brianna's number was 1,000, so we got to 835 or something English and then 25 in Spanish. So, um, I think, you know, obviously Gladys would like to have had additional numbers. Her number was 100 in Spanish, but I think 25 is pretty good. And we, um, obviously we have been working to make sure that most of our messaging is in English and Spanish for most everything. So I think, you know, we just have to keep doing that, um, and hopefully we'll get more folks to engage with us in Spanish.
Next time I incentivize with some raffle prizes.
Well, I'm.
Well, they didn't know who I was. Well, they didn't know who I was.
No.
Oh, that's true.
They did know.
That's true.
They did. Actually, they knew, yeah.
Our, um, so we ended up doing it separately from the comprehensive plan. Um, I think a little bit because city council was so interested there, um, some of the point that they did in advance or considering questions for the ballot really kind of highlighted that they really were looking for more of a community survey and so we decided to take the opportunity to do that separate from the comprehensive plan, but in service to the comprehensive plan. So, the, our consultants will be giving the presentation to city council at the next meeting on the seventh.
Will the survey results be published and made available to the pub- public?
We will probably, um, provide mostly the summary. It's eight hundred and some odd individual responses for some of that is a little overwhelming to read. Um, but it's- A little overwhelming, a little overwhelming.
You guys have to kind of-
So, I think providing kind of some context of like where people landed and what were the-
Right.
Yeah.
Um, certainly people, if, if folks want to see it, it's a public document, we will obviously share it. But I think when we put out the press release, it'll probably be more related to kind of the-
Overall trends.
Yeah.
Especially like the open comment sections, you know, it's better if you can pull those together and see the theme.
Some, yeah, right.
And actually get percentages of what some of those comments meant, you know, teasing the data.
Well, and the other key is clearly who responds is really critical. Um, I'm very excited about the comp plan. I think we'll all have a lot of hard work to do and remember, and I'm trying, and we were brought some excellent applicants. We had five great firms, really, um, and the decision narrowed down to two and I think, um, the city's gonna be served well. I think we have to remember this is a revision, so we're not gonna kick out the whole comp plan. We'll say, hey, these are the points that are still good and be built on. Um, so much of it, I, I, I wasn't the only one, but I think we have to work on, so hard on engagement of our Latino population. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna speak on old perceptions. You know, there's, there's an old perception out there, well, we invited them, they should come. No, culturally, we have to get in there and get other Latinos to get in there and seek out responses. I've actually, I did mention, I, I may have mentioned you, Jen, I know occasionally council does coffee with council. Well, one place to have coffee with council would be on a Saturday or Sunday morning over at the South Minland, um, trailer parks, uh, some places like that where we actually make an effort to get in there with Spanish-speaking outreach. So, we've got a lot of exciting work ahead of us, um, so hopefully we'll all be able to roll up our sleeves and be there. And I'm thrilled that this is a very short meeting, so I didn't have to cough through the night, so thank you.
Yeah, and that, that is a big point, you know, all of you will be members of the steering committee.
We'll have constant updates, possibly monthly or bimonthly. We'd like to also incorporate some other groups on some of those meetings too, maybe reaching out to like the Historic Preservation Commission and Parks and Reg Co- Commission if it's topics that are directly related to them. But, you know, it, it, we, you will be heavily involved, so.
I have another question. So, how do you decide which parts of the comp plan you're looking at, which ones you're not? I mean, is that from the survey, is that from the different committees offering ideas? How, how is that decision coming?
I mean, I, I think we'll, that we will evaluate the whole document to see what is either, you know, been achieved and any goals that have been achieved, what's still applicable, um, and maybe how we might need to revise those. So, I don't really see it as throwing out one piece as, as much as doing an overall update to the whole document.
So, it's like looking at everything, but some things you know you need to go deeper than others.
Yeah.
And because we got a hundred thousand dollars from the purpose of local affairs, there are things that we-
Have to do.
Yeah.
Are the-
State requirements. Thanks.
Anyhow?
What's the future meeting? So, here's Hannah.
I think that's me.
How's, how's the wing?
It's, it's good, it's, it's, it's great.
Bye.
Um, so, we do have an October meeting and, and enjoy this one for you. I hope you will appreciate we're bringing changes from the work sessions for your review and consideration. That's what came out of those meetings, just takes a little time to get to you, so the second part of those discussions. Um, so that will be including your landscape work session, uh, your retail standard work sessions and the recommendations that came out of that from you guys. And then we may also have, um, an administrative subdivision that gets on the agenda as well. Um, we do have an October work session. I do not believe we have nailed down exactly what that topic is.
At the nineteenth?
I was about to say I don't have my calendar in front of me and I'm literally holding a calendar, so that's good.
The other thing that we may consider including in those, in those code revisions is, um, city council will consider at their, I think, on the seventh, um, the adoption of the public art plan and there is a component that would, um, that affect oh seven oh. So, it is possible that we would potentially, um, include that in the code revisions related to funding for, um, public art. Depending on whether the city council will adopt.
Um, and, and also-
We need proposals for the public art. So, we hired consultants to do a public art master plan, um, and so this is that piece. So, it, it includes the answer to your question. We don't have a formalized process that's-
Oh.
Related to, um, how we would plan for all public art. We certainly have individualized ways in which we have purchased public or commissioned public art, um, but this is kind of, um, moving the way of, you know, other places to go and Carbondale and other things, Grand Junction, um, related to public art.
Will, will the community have input into that process? I know a couple people.
I think what we would see is that we would have a public call for art for, um, commission projects, depending on how the council. So, the best-
And, and you did already steal my thunder. My major news was welcome to Watkins.
Yay. Welcome, Richard. Richard, yes. Welcome, so.
Is Richard aware of the prior beer rule?
Oh, I don't know, I don't think that we told him that yet.
You first?
Huh?
No, that if you get out before nine.
Eight AM.
No, and before eight AM.
Eight AM?
I mean ATM.
Yeah, I was like, whoa.
That's a really low bar somewhere.
Eight AM, we get beer every, all the time.
Every day.
That means we drink till eight AM.
Uh, and that's, that's all I have for you. We're, you have your entire planning team that was here tonight, so that's very exciting for us. And I'm sure you'll be seeing Watkins soon as he, uh, gets up to speed and we're already throwing quite a few applications at him, so.
Oh, good luck.
I already got away.
So, did you confirm, is the workshop the nineteenth?
The workshop would be the nineteenth, yes. And we'll have a chat about that, um, topic wise to see. I don't, I don't think we're quite in the realm of comp plan work session just yet and that's gonna be, um, some heavy lifting for you guys coming up in work sessions. So, we'll see if we have a topic that we need to discuss with you or give you a break.
Did you ever get that list of the, um, approved and, okay?
Um, but I actually just presented that to, um, Garfield County Economic Development, um-
Ram, you have it.
Oh, I have it, yes, I have it.
So, I'll include, um, proposed or approved multifamily units that will be non-investor owned?
We don't actually specify-
You can, yeah, investor versus-
Who it is.
Yeah.
Certainly on the ownership side.
Right.
It's basically a list that says, you know, what the development is, how many units, what type, square footage, you know, um, your density is a column, so thirty units per acre or eighty units per acre. Um, and then also if there are any deed restricted components on the project. Um, so this is a list of all things that have come through. We're not going to include things that haven't been officially submitted yet, so-
Right, right, right.
Until a certain point and then we've got that list, so I will, I will-
And, and one more question about that. So, I know like the city of Carbondale kind of deals with their deed restricted housing. Do we have people that, that administrate that in the city unit?
Uh, but we've been so far with our programs that we've had, we've been processing in-house. We are looking as that program is going to grow exponentially at having possibly Garfield County Housing Authority be our agent, our authorized agent, um, to implement, um, inclusionary zoning. They had done that for us previously. They also implement, uh, Garfield County and Carbondale. So, it's something that they're already aware of and we're in talks with them to see what that, uh, contract may look like.
The city council did ask to have a discussion about funding and position, um, at their October nineteenth.
So, oversee, what will happen?
Which would be the alternative to Garfield County administering it?
It's something that was just very randomly brought up, I suppose. And so, we're looking at it, so yes, if a housing manager, I believe is the term that was, um, discussed, if an internal housing manager position was here with the city of Glenwood Springs, that position would likely take over all management of the programs.
Hannah, did I understand you to say that there'd be, uh, something to do with landscaping at the next regular meeting?
So, um, bringing forward the landscape change recommendations that came out of the work session in August, perhaps?
Out resistant water.
Out resistant.
Okay, yeah, right.
George, I can't remember, you might not have been at that.
Yeah, I think not.
You might even have a knee done.
Yeah, well, that's great because I thought, you know, the landscaping thing, I think, is something that really needs to be drastically over, overhauled and, um, having information at that planning meeting, well, it would be redundant since we're gonna do it at the regular meeting, so.
And they're pretty dramatic.
Yeah, and you guys will get to look and make sure that we got your interpretation right and wrote it up and make edits, add crazier things.
Pull it back, you know?
Artificial turf, whatever you want.
Well, and related to that, I'm hoping in the comp plan, we'll be one of the communities that do have a climate action plan in ours. There are more and more city comp plans are including them and we don't have one.
We actually do, it's from two thousand eight, we'll send it to you.
Really, oh, where is it hidden? Where is it hidden?
I don't know.
I'm not certain where it is, but I have it.
Maybe it'll become more obvious in the comp plan review.
I feel like the strategic housing plan is like mentioned in the comp plan, but you have to go to search for the-
A document, right. All right.
I don't know where we're keeping it.
You asked for reading material and we will provide it.
And we might make you read it, you know, five proposals overnight.
Karen will proof it.
I love it. I love it. Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. Jen, anything else? Well, then, uh, we're adjourned, baby.